So you had asked for an update on what was happening with literacy, especially in the early grades. So we're going to give you a quick run through tonight. Okay, so just to set the stage, this is not entirely new. Before COVID work had begun, planning for an elementary curriculum review in literacy, but then it was interrupted by the pandemic. And, and the work had begun because a lot had become clear about effective practices, more effective practices in teaching, the teaching of reading and writing. Also, there were better curricular options in the marketplace. And so there was a lot of interest in this. And the pandemic and the results of the pandemic really only added to the sense of urgency that this work needed to be done. So as you know, we began our work with math. We, we knew we needed to get new curriculum in reading and writing and in math. And math in many ways is simpler, so we began with math. During 21, 22, we had a very inclusive, extensive curriculum review in math. And then we ended up adopting I Ready Classroom Math K five. And that, as you know, is in its second year and going very well. So literacy is our current priority. And there are a lot of pieces to literacy. There's phonemic awareness, phonics, writing comprehension, vocabulary, lots of different pieces that you have to take into account.
Next slide, please Doug.
So we decided, obviously all children need instruction in reading, but we decided to start with a focus on K two because of the research, and there's a lot of research showing the outsized impact of effective reading instruction before age eight. So last spring, we had another quite extensive, inclusive review with representation from all of the schools to investigate the available curricular options and see if anything met our needs. And the upshot of that was that none of the complete core early literacy curricula that were out there really were well aligned with our district priorities and needs. And Stephanie's going to show you in a few minutes, a slide of visual about the pieces that you really need in a comprehensive core curriculum. A skilled reader is really doing many different things at once. One of them is word identification, you know, looking at all the sounds and letters and saying, what word do these things combined to produce? And the other piece is kind of a language comprehension piece. So if you can say decode the word chair, it doesn't do you much good unless you know, are we talking about something that you're sitting on? Or are we talking about what Deb is, what Sarah rather is doing with the meeting right now? So both of those pieces are needed with skilled reading. And we didn't feel like any of those really met our needs. So what the review committee decided was to focus on that word identification piece, on what we call a foundational skills reading program. There was a really excellent one out there called Magnetic Foundations from Curriculum Associates, which happens to be the same company that produces I Ready Classroom Math. So with the superintendent's approval, we decided to pilot with eight teachers in four buildings for this year, just to see how it went. And Magnetic Foundations is working towards a complete core literacy program that's not ready yet. And when it's ready, maybe we'll adopt it, maybe we'll go with something else. It's not clear. But in the meantime, they have provided teachers with a resource called Reading Ready Toolbox that's kind of supplementing those foundational skills. Stephanie's going to tell you about some of the other things that we have going on.
Yeah, so continuing with this current school year, again with the recommendation from the Literacy Review Committee, the superintendent's approval, there was a decision to-
I'm sorry, can you bring the mic closer? Just so the recording will catch your voice.
Yeah, sure. The Literacy Review Committee brought forward a recommendation to pilot a second literacy program, that of writing. And the superintendent approved that. So the decision was to pilot Think SRSD Writing. It's SRSD is an instructional pedagogy. It's a very flexible pedagogy to help students learn to employ the same kinds of writing skills that really skilled writers use. And SRSD stands for Self-Regulated Strategy Development. And the interesting part about that is that as teachers, we know that there's a very heavy cognitive load on writers, little writers and upper elementary writers, certainly. There is a lot of planning that goes in. There's a lot of self-monitoring that goes on. There's a lot of sustained attention to task. There's a lot of monitoring for what you want to revise or set goals around. So the self-regulation piece really contributes to the instruction of the writing process as well. One of the beautiful aspects of that is that it strengthens a student's own cognitive processes, that they can go on and apply math and science in the lunchroom and in the playground. So things like self-talk, self-encouragement, self-reinforcement, self-motivation. And those things are an integral part of this writing program as well. We have eight teachers who've been piloting this year, this program. And some, one element of it has also been shared at Fort River with the majority of their teachers, and they've been using that. It's around creating what we call gist statements, or what's the gist of this topic we've read about or this text we've read? So it's kind of like who, what, when, where, kind of gist kind of thing. If we move ahead to think about plans for next year, given the pilot teacher feedback from these colleagues that have so generously and expertly been working with this program this year, and with the improved writing outcomes we've seen from their K two students, we collaborated with our building leaders and we've made plans to move forward with Think SRSD Writing in all of our K six classrooms next year. We're really pleased to be able to share tonight that because we all know that it's not the program that creates the magic, it's the highly qualified teachers who are well-trained and feel supported by professional learning, that are all of our K six classroom teachers will have training this spring. And we're able to include all of our ELL colleagues, our SE teachers, and all of the reading teachers. And we've been able to design that so that there's a day of training for kindergarten, another day for each subsequent grade level. So the demand on our building leaders to come up with sub-coverage is really reduced by being able to spread this out over a number of training sessions. As we work towards teachers being ready for fall, there will be another short PD session on the first PD when we return in August. And then building leaders will advise within their buildings on implementation timeframes and ongoing support that teachers will garner to build on the instructional practices in their buildings. On the next slide, we've, we've, again, with full coordination with our superintendent and our building leaders, the decision has been made to extend the pilot of the structured literacy component of early literacy, again, the Magnetic Foundations Program. At the same time, we all recognize the need for a full core literacy curriculum that Mary mentioned, and we will continue to monitor. We'll most likely set up a review committee again next year to review any new core curricula that are developed. We would hope we might come up with one that interfaces with Magnetic Foundations or that may provide their own really effective systematic structured literacy component that will have a very well-designed scope and sequence of how the phonetic skills would be taught across those grade levels. For our grade three, six teachers and students, they'll be able to make, again, be able to make use of Ready Reading Toolbox with their students. This is something that's available to us digitally on the Curriculum Associates platform. So our teachers are very accustomed to that platform. They can click on and they can toggle to math if they're working with math resources, or they can toggle to reading and they can access the Ready Reading Toolbox, which provides a K to eight reading comprehensive, reading comprehension supplemental program for them based on common core standards, particularly around informational and literary texts. And then in preparation for what will be a very anticipated, unexpected future core literacy curriculum adoption in 2025, it's very important for us to begin some professional learning opportunities for teachers to be better, feel more confident and more informed about evidence-based practices for structured literacy pedagogy that's aligned to the science of reading. And again, those are going to take place across next year. So there'll be training sessions for kindergarten teachers and for first and second grade teachers. Because the needs in those two levels, even though at K two often gets banded together, it's different. And we're pleased we'll be able to include special education teachers in that work as well. And, and the final slide was, was really informational. This is a very common infographic that was designed many years ago by Hollis Scarborough to help parents understand what, what are all the components that go into reading? You can see that at the bottom, that's where we think about Magnetic Foundations and the structured literacy work that occurs from K two. And it's so instrumental to have happen by, by age eight. It makes a huge difference. Word recognition is what we really think of as decoding. And then above, the, the strands go into becoming a skilled reader are really around language comprehension. And those are things that are going to be accessible through Ready Reading Toolbox for now until we have another core curriculum. And you can see how over time, those get woven together as children become more increasingly strategic at using them and applying them from instruction and practice until they become skilled readers. And that equals reading comprehension, which is obviously that kind of meaning-making is our ultimate goal. So thank you. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Yes, questions. Irv.
This is really impressive. The question that I have is that how do these two programs, the writing and the reading program coordinate with each other? Because obviously both of them are intertwined. I mean, you're, you're reading and you're writing. The skills that are required for writing are, is, is the ability to recognize words, phonics and all that stuff to write the word.
Right.
But you also have the reading component. So the question I have is, how do these two programs work together in a coherent fashion?
It's a, it's a really excellent question. And this is why we're, we're so intent that our K two learners will have this opportunity to have this kind of structured literacy work, because that's what makes a difference when they go to encode or write. So that part of that heavy cognitive load comes from having to encode, get those sounds and the connected letters out the head, down the arm, out the pencil and on paper, along with all those other planning strategies. One of the things that's impressive about Think SRSD Writing, Irv, is that it, it's very flexibly used with, in science, in social studies, and particularly in reading. So as teachers begin training this week, actually, they're going to learn about how to use text from their reading programs to integrate into the writing.
And one other thing I would add, Irv, is just, there was particular interest in SRSD because of the self-regulation piece being able to be applied across multiple subject areas and indeed throughout the whole school day, especially after COVID, because of the executive functioning struggles and the mental health challenges the kids were having.
Just one follow-up. That's very important because you have this COVID effect in relationship to kids. The executive functioning skills are lagging behind other developmental skills. So the question becomes, how do you then marry that information with this developmental writing program that you're talking about? Because it's, maybe I'm wrong. I think it's a developmental writing program, maybe it isn't. But it seems like it is. And, and therefore, how, how is that woven into it? And the second part of that is, all of us know that kids come to us in various stages of development in relationship to reading and their readiness to read. And some of those students come to, to us with developmental kinds of issues, which, which prevents a lot of early learning activities and acquisition as they enter into a, a classroom. That is a particular problem for a teacher in any situation because you have kids who are, who are behind and ready to read, and those who are really not ready to read, and those who are already reading. And, and the only reason I'm saying that, because I've been confronted with that as elementary school teacher. And it's a conundrum that is always there. So I'd really like to hear more about that.
The, the power of SRSD, it, it applies these self-regulation strategies in the context of writing, which is such a complex task for anyone to undertake. And then the thought, Irv, is that that transfers to other situations. Do you know the children are learning, especially with the self-coaching? Do you know, I'm feeling really frustrated here. I don't know what to do. What options do I have? That kind of thing in a very specific context and then generalize from there.
No, just, you know, just that, self-regulation and executive functioning skills, those two things are, are, come together and they conflict with each other. Because some kids, as you just noted, noted because of COVID and beyond, don't come with those executive functioning skills.
All right, Jennifer.
Hi, I have a few questions. So first, just high level, how is our current curriculum, like deficient or insufficient? I don't, I don't need specifics, but just like categories of, I, I, I see you saying that even before COVID, we were looking into making, doing a curriculum review, but like, what's not working about our current curriculum?
Our current curriculum is not evidence-based at all. This is a curriculum that was propagated on lots of schools. As having evidence, there is no evidence. And, you know, for many, many years, this is part of the, the story of the science of reading. And I think beyond that, it's not, it does not teach structured literacy in any way, shape or form.
Great. It's funny that it's called science of reading and-
Right.
Can I, can I continue? Okay, so when you say there's no complete literacy curricular program, do you mean reading and writing combined? There's no one that has both that meets our needs?
We looked at some that offered last spring in the review, that offered really all of the pieces, including writing. For a variety of reasons, we didn't think they aligned with our district priorities. For example, there was one curriculum, I won't name it, but we felt that the representations had many positive attributes. We felt that the representations, in certain cases, particularly of Black and Brown students, were cartoonish. Right. That was the reaction of everyone on the committee. We said, no matter how good the materials are, we're not putting these materials in front of our students. So that was one. In, in another case, there was just the time requirements that they said, well, this is a complete curriculum, but it takes, what was it, three hours a day? Right. So we said, nope. Crossed that one off list. So, so we haven't really found the right fit just yet.
Great. Can I keep going?
Can I follow up, though, on one thing? Is Magnetic Foundations, right now it's K to two. Is it, do they intend to develop at the higher grades? Or it's really only for these very early?
So it's actually a K eight curriculum, but Foundations is about the foundational skills at K two. So that's how they tease that out. They developed the three eight part of that curriculum before they developed the K two part. They are currently developing the Spanish foundational skills curriculum, which Amherst may be very interested in.
Okay, go ahead.
So who comprises the review committee? Like, not names, but just like, what are the people named? What are the functions of people on the review committee?
Right. So we always put, cast the net very widely with an eye to getting representation from all schools. So we always had some representation from all schools. Also, people in administrators. Also people in administrators. We always want to have a couple of building principals or assistant principals involved. We invited the ELL coordinator to be part of the review. We always wanted to make sure that we had a representation from special education. So we try to get a variety of roles from a variety of buildings and also parents and community members.
Bridgette.
Well, first, I want to say thank you. Great presentation and I'm excited to see the SS, SRSD. I use a self-regulated math for the upper grades in one of my grants and we've had really great outcomes with it, especially around strategies for exam-taking and whatnot. So I, I, I love that it's coming in the younger grades. So I was thinking about that question of the science of reading and we all know like the scandal of the curriculums that came before and whatnot. And what I'm wondering is, how are we measuring the improvement? You mentioned the improvement, like off the baseline and going forward and so that we know specifically for our district and for our subgroups, like that we are seeing growth in how it looks.
So one of the things that you'll recall that we appreciate so much about Curriculum Associates and our math curriculum is the highly-developed data platform that comes with that math curriculum. And, and that also exists for the literacy curriculum they've developed. So we have an opportunity in addition to the, the three times a year that we provide literacy screeners for our K six students as a district priority, one that's also necessitated by state regulations to be done at least twice a year so that we can determine any students who may be at risk of dyslexia in grades K two. We actually benefit then from also using the diagnostic assessment that's on the magnetic foundations platform. So we have two measures of students' progress across the year. And that, those will, that will, could stay with us so that data can collect over time, just like the math.
And I just have one follow-up on that. And so then I'm curious, what's being used outside of the supplement? Like, what are we doing, especially given that, you know, that we're not sure that what we're using works for three, three through six?
We're very fortunate that over the years, each of our schools has been able to afford to have very extensive, what I'm going to call book closets. Some of them are book rooms that are very highly organized thematically, you know, in terms of content by authors, by student interests. And so we have a very rich resource of literary opportunities for children to engage with literature and, and informational text as well, certainly. And so certainly that continues to happen and usually that's involved with additional phonics programs that are in each of the schools. So we'll continue to, you know, can continue to use some of those phonics programs as we're making this transition and that kind of meets some of the structured literacy needs. But we'd love for it to become more seamless. Thanks so much.
Deb.
Sorry, I'm trying to put the pieces together and I, I don't have the same range as some other people do here. So forgive me, but could you tell me, help me tease out the difference between foundational skills and supplemental foundational skills, which is the magnetic foundations and reading, writing toolbox? And then I had a separate question, but should I just?
No, first, one at a time.
Could you maybe go back to the, just the visual? Yeah. Yeah, so there, there are a couple of pieces here, Deb. The one is that, that word recognition piece.
Yep.
That, that was totally missing from the curriculum we were talking about earlier that really people, when they looked into it deeply realized it wasn't really helping children learn to read. So that key pieces is, is what we're focusing on with magnetic foundations, but that's only a tiny piece. That's that word recognition, the decoding piece. And that in itself, there's so many other aspects to learning to be a skilled reader, like your vocabulary and syntax, syntax and context and oral fluency and all of those things. And those are the pieces that are addressed more, the writing piece in a complete core curriculum.
I, I think I would also add that when we reviewed the literacy curriculum last spring, across the several months last spring, we also looked very closely, we, we use an evaluation tool from the Reading League and magnetic foundations, while it is by and large a structured literacy program for foundational skills, it includes a knowledge-building component. It includes vocabulary. It includes some writing in there. But not from the standpoint of trying to profess to be a core curriculum. But some of those things on the upper part of the rope are certainly included. So it's important to know, yeah.
So some of the foundational stuff from magnetic foundations, supplementing with reading, writing toolbox. And then the third program separate is this, I think, SRSD.
Correct.
And there are some programs that integrate them, but nothing satisfied all three pieces.
Exactly.
So these are the pieces that we've put together to the satisfaction that the entire three pieces work together.
To pilot, correct, to pilot. I would say that there was also nothing in terms of core curriculum that even aligned the two. Like the oral language, language comprehension, reading comprehension as one and structured literacy. Even, even the ones that claimed to be the whole thing, we didn't even feel they were strong at both of those components.
Okay, so I'm still working on the pieces. Structured literacy is the three pieces together? What, two pieces together?
So structured literacy is really the phonological awareness, the, the sounds, the alphabetic principle of knowing that sounds connect to letters.
So foundational.
Letters represent sounds, right?
Yeah.
That we, we were all born to use speech and language, not to reprint. And then so the decoding comes in. How do we connect that to print? And how do we grow to recognize certain words automatically so that part of our brain develops and, and we hang on to that? When, when, when you look at a word, you find little chunks of the word that your brain has stored and said, I've got that mapped. I don't need to decode that. You've got it.
And that's the, that part is the reading, writing toolbox?
That part is the structured literacy that's so critical from K to two.
The sounding out words.
I, I'm still not sure where the three pieces that we're talking about fit together. Maybe we're just talking about reading right now? Is that it?
The two pieces of the reading. So one is the word identification.
Yep.
Right. So like I was saying earlier, you, you can put together the C-H-A-I-R and realize it's chair. But then there's still, there's that knowledge component that without it, it, it really, you're not able to read intelligibly, right? So there's, that's the, the bottom piece, that magnetic foundations on the graphic. That's the word ID. Then the language comprehension piece is the fuller core curriculum. And then students need to learn to write.
Yes.
So that's the third piece.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to, oh.
I did have one more question. Just, so you're piloting this in the K two classrooms, but you're starting to work in the three through six classrooms with the reading, writing toolbox. How, can you give me a little bit on that?
It's just that it's available. It's available for those teachers and students to use. And when it became available in March, as teachers were preparing students for ELAMCAS preparation, they were excited to see some of the resources that were available to them. So we're not suggesting that that is suddenly a curriculum that people need to implement. It is a supplemental tool that's available to them.
Thank you.
So I have two questions. One, one of you mentioned Spanish and I had wondered if, if these strategies are also, I mean, is the hope or expectation to employ them in the Combinantes program also?
So the.
Since it seems to be method, although reading Spanish is different than reading English.
That's exactly right. So Think SRSD Writing has been piloted in two of our Combinantes classrooms this year. We were very pleased to be able to make that happen. And we have been able to acquire a number of the resources for this writing program that were translated into Spanish in a, a number of schools in Texas and they've shared them with us. So we have a lot of resources that we're going to be able to provide for teachers in Spanish. The reading, as you say, is different. You know, to learn to read in, in, in Spanish involves reading by syllables as compared to reading by distinct phonemes or sounds and letters. And so this, the foundational skills program in Spanish that's being developed in a line with magnetic foundations, it will be parallel to that, but it will meet the needs of children learning to read in Spanish.
Okay. And I'm going to want to move on to our next agenda item after this question. I know we, we could talk for a long time. It sounds like that it's possible in a year or two that you won't be using the magnetic toolbox anymore. Did I miss, like that you might choose a new curriculum?
I think, I would, I think the toolbox, the re, Ready Reading Toolbox as a supplemental comprehension tool will always, would be available. Okay, that's, that, you know, that could even, that could even supplement. Whether we would continue with the K two foundational skills program that we're piloting and will extend to pilot again next year remains to be seen because of other core curricula that may come to the market that we want to review, that we'd have decisions to make.
But you will have, you will feel that it was a worthwhile.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you both very much. We need to move on.
I have a question for you, Sarah.
Yes.
It sounds like the SRSD curriculum is going to be adopted in K through six in all classrooms. Is that a decision that this committee needs to vote on? Adopting a new curriculum?
I'm not sure. Is it in fact a curriculum or just you're using this toolbox?
It's a program. It's a pedagogy. It's not really, it's not.
It's not a big change.
No, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a change, but it's, it's not, they don't describe themselves as a curriculum. It's really a method.
Because of the way it can apply to, as we said, it is, it is a flexible program that can apply. You can use this to be writing about science. You can be writing about social studies. But it will be on the base of our writing K to six.
It hadn't occurred to me that we might need to. Let us mull that over and if we need to vote at some point, I don't even know that you'd need to come back, but. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
It's great to hear what's happening in the classroom. All right. Just so everybody knows, I'm hoping to get through the next two items at least before we have to recess at seven fifteen. All right, so the next item will sound familiar to the committee, the Student Opportunity Act Plan now for the elementary schools. Mary, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll, I'll be very quick. You did get the presentation for the regional group, right? So much of this is familiar and a lot of it is the same. So as you know, it was, the act was passed in 2019 and it was designed to give additional resources to districts with the neediest students. That does not include any of our three districts, so we don't receive any additional funding from this. However, we are still required to develop a plan to address the disparities in attendance and achievement that show up in what they call our district heat map, which they give us before we develop our plan. And it's of course of concern to us anyway. We would be seeking to address these disparities. So it's a three-year process. We're in year one, so that's when we develop the most extensive plan. And then we do a yearly update. And, and I will just add, the act will come up for renewal within a couple of years. And do you know, there are like 200 districts in the states that don't get funding from this, so.
Nowhere.
Hint, hint. You know, maybe there's some well-timed advocacy there. So anyway, the, in, for, for the Amherst district, the subgroups that show the disparities in achievement and attendance are essentially the same as what we see in the region. So it's students with disabilities, our low-income learners, our English learners, our students who are black or African-American and our students who are Hispanic or Latinx. And the, 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 the achievement and the attendance intersect in ways that really aren't surprising, right? So those, all of those students, all those subgroups have higher than average rates of chronic absenteeism. And the chronic absenteeism, just to remind you, is more than 10% of a school year. So that's at least 18 days in a school year. And to give you an idea of the magnitude, the, last year in the state, grades K through five had a chronic absenteeism rate of about 17%, a little more. In Amherst, in the Amherst district, it was about 21%. And in the subgroups that I just mentioned, it's, well, for example, the English learners and the Hispanic and Latinx students are between 31 and 35%. So those are, those are concerning rates of chronic absenteeism. And, and as I said, it does intersect with, with achievement. So we know MCAS is an imperfect measure, but statewide of the students who had chronic absenteeism in grades three through eight, it was like a quarter of the students who were chronically absent passed the ELAMCAS and about a fifth passed the math MCAS. So, so it definitely is concerning. And we have, you remember from the region plan, we have to identify, Desi gives us a list of possible areas of intervention and we have to identify at least three that we will work on. So I think I'll just briefly tell you what those three are for Amherst. There's a lot of detail about it in the plan. And I know last time you had also asked if there had been any stakeholder input. So we did have one interesting email that I will mention to you. And we can discuss that a little bit. So the three areas, one is supporting curriculum implementation and, and you're all experts about that now, so you know what we're doing in math and what we're doing in reading and writing. And curriculum is, is, is a powerful tool. It's been shown to be a powerful tool. It has, I remember when we were doing the math review, there was research showing that the difference between a high-quality curriculum and one that is not a high-quality curriculum is, is a, has about the same amount of difference as that between a first-year teacher and a teacher with more than three years of experience, which is a world of difference. So it is a powerful tool for sure. The second area we said we were going to intervene in is enhanced support for social, emotional learning and mental health. And a very important thing that's happening at the elementary level, not yet at the secondary level in that regard is we now have a mental health screener. So kids aren't just screened academically, but they're also screened for mental health. And that's really enabling, giving teachers information and counselors information that they didn't have before. And they're able to intervene in ways that really were more guesswork before this. So I think that's going to prove to be very, very helpful. Another thing that's going on is, this was before you came together as a committee, but the, the elementary schools all just came up with school improvement plans. And these are very focused on student identity and, and really meeting students where they are. A part of that is curriculum at all the schools now, some have it in, already in place. Some are developing it on identity and sexuality. That's a very, very important curricular piece that is supporting students in, in many different ways. Like the region, we, the, the elementary district benefits from having the services of Maureen Fleming. We now have that behavioral mental health administrator who is a resource to families and also supports the schools at all levels. And we also have the, as we mentioned, we're working on continuing to educate staff through our curriculum and, and PD days. And this year it's focused on the LGBTQIA plus and likely to include more work on neurodiversity also in, in future. So the third area is effective programming for multilingual learners. And that's an area where a lot of work is being done and has been done in recent years. Right now, our largest percentage of students, about 60% of our ELs are Spanish-speaking. And the Combinantes program that was set up five years ago was a, a big piece of, of our attempt to meet the needs of those students. About 80% of the Spanish-speaking English learners in our district are in the Combinantes program in grades K through four. So it's a very substantial percentage. And Doug's going to talk to you about, briefly about a tweak that's being made in the Combinantes program with respect to the language balance between English and Spanish and when, when that's going to happen. So that's one thing that's going on. There's a lot of work with structured literacy as it applies to English learners across the district. That's another very, very important thing. And something that was called sheltered English immersion that all teachers were trained on, right? All teachers and administrators. All teachers and administrators, it's a really big state effort before COVID. It, it kind of, COVID really interrupted that, and I think it's really sort of fallen away in a lot of classrooms. And the, the, the goal of that is to make, increase access, um, in mainstream classrooms for English learners. And so that's something we very much want to really continue working on and to beef up our efforts in. And there's a lot more details in the plans that you can look at, um, but I know we are on a very tight timetable tonight. So I did wanna tell you about the one interesting email that we had from, from a parent who also is a staff member in the district. And, um, she had a number of questions and comments. And one of them was, she said, she wondered if we were spend, if, if the emphasis on social-emotional learning was actually worsening the mental health crisis. And, um, her argument was that we should be focusing on developing the resilience of children instead of, um, making more, a lot of things, reasons for accommodations. And I think that's a really, it's, it, do you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fine line there. I think it, I think it is. I think, um, I asked her for, I said, cause she said there was research showing that. And I said, well, could you share with me, cause I'd be very interested to read it? But I know I can speak to my experience as a, um, special ed and math teacher at the high school. I felt there was a really fine line between meeting the needs of students and, um, sort of over, and enabling them rather than building their own muscles for, um, dealing with challenges. So I mean, that's, that's a, you know, that's a line that we keep our eye on, for sure. And another comment that she had, she wondered whether, she, she questioned whether it was appropriate to be asking students to identify their pronouns. And she said, for example, we would never ask students to identify their race. And, um, she thought that there was sort of, there was too much, that at ages when children are still developing their identities, were we, were we sort of constraining them in certain ways? And so, um, I consulted with Maureen, cause I said, oh, that's a really good question, I wonder what she would think about this. And, um, her answer was helpful to me and I think to this parent as well. And that was that pronouns, gender-based pronouns are used as shorthand in a way that we don't do in anything the same with respect to race. For example, in a classroom, a teacher will often use a gender identity pronoun to refer to, as a shorthand. Say, I gave it to him, but would not say, I gave it to the Latinx person. So, um, that, that was, and, and she was saying that, you know, makes students more comfortable in, in the classroom when people use the pronouns that they prefer and so on. Another question that this parent had, um, questioned whether curriculum really was an effective intervention tool. And I shared that research that I mentioned earlier. And finally, questioned whether we were doing too much time online, too much time on screens, and whether the curriculum involved too much time on screens. And, um, I said we were very careful about that, that it was being used in very targeted ways to individualize instruction and to provide really precise assessment. But that I, but I felt that honestly, for most kids, a lot of the exposure to screens was happening outside of school. So it was a, it was a, you know, a complicated juggle. But it was an interesting exchange that we had, and that was the one, um, email that we got.
Can I ask first, so were parents and guardians and staff explicitly, uh, asked for, I mean, offered this as here's a document, please comment on it? I just don't remember seeing an announcement.
They were, it was sent through Parent Square.
Which I'm not on, okay.
Right, right, so, um, and they were saying, this is what, you know, a little bit of background, this is something that we create and submit to the state. We would love to have your feedback, and we got, um, that one person.
And how long ago?
It was also shared with staff.
Yeah, how long ago was that?
Several weeks ago.
And you've only had one comment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And one at the regional level, right?
Right.
Have you broken out the numbers in relationship to students with disabilities? And how many of those students with disabilities, uh, are comprised of people, of kids who are English learners, low-income, African-American, et cetera? What's, what's that demographic look like for students with disabilities? And is there any kind of cross, um, references there in, in terms of? Because when I look at it, I say, well, students with disability, they could be low-income, they could be, and so what?
Many of these students are in multiple categories of-
Yes, but if they're in multiple categories, then are we counting them more than once? When we talk, when we talk about an English learner, uh, and a low-income person, and these numbers up there in terms of their, um, uh, achievement levels?
Mm-hmm.
And how their, and their absentee rates? Are, are the students with disabilities absent more than, uh, people who are low-income? But are those, are students with disabilities also-
Yes.
Kids who are also low-income?
Yes, I understand your question. We follow the, the breakdowns that Desi uses, um, and Desi breaks them out that way. But, but yes, I mean, we could, we could look at the intersections and, and for you, but that's not what, the way Desi does it for these purposes.
Right, and, 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 and the reason that's important to me is, is, is that, uh, you're talking about frustrated learners here. And frustrated learners don't come to school. I mean, they, they, they tend not to come to school because they're not being reinforced, uh, in, in very positive ways. And those very positive ways may be impacted by their learning disability, which we don't know in terms of their, in terms of these categories that you're, you're listing here.
Deb made that point, and when we were talking about the region plan, that these, it's, it's not a one-way causality. It's not just that, um, you know, a, a, attendance affects achievement. Achievement also affects attendance. So if a student is struggling at school, that might be the reason for the atti- for the absence, right?
Yeah, well, it's not gonna come to school if you're, you're not being successful.
Right. And, and in fact, the comment, the one comment that we got from, at the regional level, was from a member of CPAC who is, who objected to the attendance hearings and said, I really think this amounts to punishing children who maybe aren't finding a hospitable environment or one conducive to their learning at school. And so, um, I said, yes, I, I, I totally understand what you're saying, and we have to do the attendance hearings because attendance monitoring is required by law. But, but hopefully what happens at those attendance hearings, one of the things is to try to dig in and find out what in particular cases, as Doug spoke to at the regional, when we were talking about the regional plan, what's responsible, cause it's different in, in, in individual situations, right?
Parents have approached me on this before. I also have questions about it. These numbers for these groups, these subgroups are really not good. What are we doing to improve? What are the things that teachers, administrators, and staff are doing on a day-to-day basis to make sure that these numbers do, do not stay the same, that they actually go down?
These plans are, are part of our answer. This is not a district improvement plan, you know? And I think your question has to be at, when we are developing a district improvement plan, has to be really at the heart of it. Cause there, but, but this is a partial answer, these are some of the things we're trying to do to reduce those numbers.
All right, so last question. We're spending about, we have about, I think it was two million dollars total, uh, two million plus I was looking at here for these different programs, I can't go, oh, right, well, anticipated investments in, in those programs are as follows. I won't go through all of them, but it's a total of two million, three hundred and eight thousand. Of that, when I look, try to remember the budget in relationship to special education, and whether these, uh, students with disabilities are included in their special education budget, are they, are students with disabilities included in that special edu- special education budget? Which is an enormous part of our budget.
You know, stu-, I mean, the students, uh, student disabilities are affected by all aspects of our budget. Not just, you know, the, the special, do you know what I mean? So I mean, I think the whole, what you're asking of is what kind of experience are they encountering?
All right, we got a, we got a, uh, special education budget. Are students with disabilities within that special education budget, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, because then these numbers up there, the two million plus makes sense to me.
Right.
Yeah, all right, can I move, yeah, Deb had her hand up earlier, so, go ahead.
So I'm gonna, um, go back to the chicken and the egg thing in a slightly different way. I know, um, in higher ed oftentimes, the pace of the class is so fast that if a student falls behind, they just, it compounds. And part of what is useful to me and other, uh, people who pay attention to the individual students in their classes is working with that student to catch up and creating a plan. And when that plan doesn't work, another plan. So I just wonder if part of the absentee, addressing the absenteeism could be taking some of the pressure off of that feeling of despondency, I'm behind, I'll never catch up at whatever level, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, but, but that's some of what the attendance hearing tries to, to accomplish. You know, there are a number of people involved trying to come up with a plan, and individual teachers-
Yeah.
Doing that with students, I, you know, I think there's a lot of sensitivity to that.
But that's a one-time experience for that. I mean, is there a plan then that those teachers continue to work with, with that student and that family?
If, if needed, if that doesn't address the issue, yes, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
If I can add a little bit to that as well. Um, just thinking about the elementary school in particular, the, you know, the, you know, the secondary has a sort of formalized process because there's like, you know, credits for graduation and all that stuff is part and parcel of all of the attendance hearing stuff. At the elementary, that's not the piece, but, so the, so the classroom teachers, you know, acutely aware of it and, and working in combination with administration and guidance in the school to try to address that. Those, those attendance things in a holistic way, um, both to have the kid there, but also so that they experience and get caught up and, and are getting the supports they need to feel caught up and, and, you know, uh, able to participate fully.
Thank you.
Jennifer.
I, I have two things. I'm gonna emphasize again, um, the thing I said when we saw this as a regional school committee, which is about, um, parents and absenteeism. So I think, I, I, I hear that you inform parents and that, about absences and absenteeism, but I think it's super important to educate and inform parents continually the consequences of absenteeism. Cause again, on, on any given day, on any given morning, a parent might be like, okay, fine, you don't have to go to school today, or I'm not gonna make a big deal of it, cause it's just one day. But if parents are more aware continually that, once you, as you approach chronic absenteeism and, and once you're past it, every day that your student misses could, is, is another day that's gonna lead to, you know, the things that you've mentioned, a higher dropout, a higher likelihood of dropout, poorer performance on MCAS, unlikely to graduate. So I feel like it might seem obvious, but I don't think it's necessarily obvious to parents what the consequence is of kids missing, uh, uh, one day or any day or continually, continuing to miss.
I agree with you. And I think as we, you know, now that we don't have the five-day COVID requirement-
Yeah.
Right, I think that, the further away we get from the pandemic, I think the more feasible it is to do that without losing a lot of objections, but I, I agree with you. I think this is significant, I think those, it, it seems small, but it's really, could have a powerful effect.
Yeah. And then, you, you saw me make a face when you, when you mentioned the, the one email you received that said, instead of focusing so much on social-emotional wellness, we should focus on teaching kids resilience. And I made a face, cause that kind of sounds like, well, instead of doing this touchy-feely thing, we have to teach kids to be tougher. Which isn't exactly what the person said, but that's, that's how I interpret it. And it reminds me of an extended family member I had when I was a kid who told me she was gonna tease me to make me get used to being teased so that I would be more comfortable being teased and my, and I would, that would toughen me up, which didn't work. And it's, it's when, it's when, I think, it's when students feel safe and protected and, and cared for that they learn resilience. So I definitely think it's important to teach resilience, but I don't think you'd do that by toughening kids up intentionally. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, just, just, just one, one more thing. I, I, I think that it would be really good to know what the concrete steps are being taken with these kids who are chronically absent and who are falling behind on a day-to-day basis. I know from personal experience, when I was in one particular elementary school, that we showed up at parents' house to talk about their kids in school and, and the importance of being there. And to make a contract with the parents, but to do it in a proactive way. These numbers cannot continue to be the same year after year after year. And we sit there and say, wow, here are the numbers. But we need to know what concrete steps are being, not, not in concrete, but proactive concrete steps are being taken to, uh, uh, deal with these numbers. And also, are there the appropriate resources being put in place?
Can I, can I respond? That's a great question. I think maybe go beyond the scope of the plan and we could have that in as, as an agenda item for larger.
All, all I'm saying is, is, is Sarah, that we can't come here year after year and hear the same thing. But we don't hear what is being done and concrete steps are being taken. I don't wanna hear it in the streets from parents, I don't wanna be confronted with it, and I can't answer that question.
I imagine the answer depends a lot on the child and the circumstance.
It's more than just a child, it's a whole, it's more than just a child. It's more, it's a whole cohort out there, African-Americans, kids with disabilities, Hispanics. It's more than just a child.
I meant for any one child.
It's more- It is, it is, it is, it is a-
It's a huge problem.
It's more than just a huge problem. When a person of Af- African-American like me hear that, and coming from the background that I have in terms of my teaching and et cetera, and I know parents out there hear this and say, hey, are we being overlooked? Are we being, being given the same kind of treatment as you would another child? And what evidence do you have to indicate that? And that's all I'm asking. What evidence can I present to a parent? I, I can, I do not have any, that we are doing something to ameliorate this pro- this problem. I do not wish to be back here same time next year with the same numbers without any answers. And all I'm asking for, what are we doing? What can we do better? If we don't have the resources, what are the resources that are needed? What is the amount of money that's gonna be needed to put those resources in place? That's what I'm asking. I, I, I wanna know, because if the resources aren't there, then we need to get the resources there.
Mary, is there any, can you respond?
I, I think it is-
At least in part, or, or, yeah?
No, I thi- I think it is something we, we should discuss at greater length. Or, I think it's, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I do hear what you're saying. And, and, but I do think, and I, for example, I could, but I don't, I know time is short tonight. Uh, but there's, I know one principal, and I have talked about this many times, this principal is making, elementary principal is making particular efforts, calling home and interacting with kids around attendance. Very, very specifically on attendance and is seeing really good results. I think it's a topic worth exploring, cause I'm, the whole, the whole parent communication piece, I, I am strongly in favor of. I think it can make a difference. And there are other, there are other, it's much bigger than that, but I think that's a piece. The caring it shows and the awareness and just the consequences, making sure families realize the consequences, those are important steps.
Yes, just showing up is a good thing.
All right, I'd like Bridget to have an opportunity to-
Sure, so I, I will just say that part of my question actually overlapped with what Irv said in that I would really love to see, and maybe we can get this on the agenda for another time, like, what are the steps when a family reaches a certain attendance level or this type of thing is happening? And how do the proposed remedies for attendance, what's, what's the feeling? What's the experience? How do they come forward? I've heard feedback just in the last week that the attendance hearings caused a lot of fear and, um, tension in some families when they were announced before the break and then kids over the break thinking they weren't, you know, this was upper level, that they weren't gonna graduate. And they were upset that children were told before parents. But then I remember back in the day that you used to send home letters and the DA was mentioned. And so there's like a real sort of punitive experience. And I will also share experiences from other districts where everyone goes roller skating when they've hit these attendance levels, or, um, you know, they have an attendance party and there's, you know, um, everything wrapped in neon and it's in the dark or whatever, like cool experiences. So that attendance isn't seen as something like, oh my god, we're running late, we're not gonna make it. But it sort of boosts, like, here I'm going, yay, with attendance, do you know what I mean? Like, I would love to see what the steps are and especially how the framing is so that it's something that's, here, come to school, not like, oh my god, you're gonna miss school again. Can you believe we're in this mess, could you get your act together?
Yeah, no, I think it could be a very fruitful, and, and it's different at the elementary and the secondary, of course. And I would say, do you know, the COVID, I really, that, that was a ve- that was a very big, there was a real reluctance, I think, to push people too hard, cause they say, look, I, you know, you get COVID twice, you're ten days, right there, without any complications and so on. So hopefully, this is a new era and we- So hopefully, this is a new era and we, we can think creatively about.
Okay. Well, I am noting this as a i- item for greater discussion. So my only question, um, and then we will move on is, given that it's been out for public comment and you've gotten not much, is it in fact, do we need to vote? I don't remember how that was resolved at the regional level, whether you.
The, the region was gonna wait a little longer and then.
But then vote, okay. All right. So, um.
Ultimately, yes, you have to vote. Whether you wanna do it tonight or not is the committee's decision.
All right. Well, then, uh, we'll have the motion on the table and s- and see if we're ready. So I will move that the Amherst School Committee accept, adopt, I'm not sure what the.
Approve.
Approve the Student Opportunity Act Plan for Amherst twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, the draft dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Sir second? No?
I'm gonna second, yeah.
Thank you. All right. More discussion? Is anybody want particular changes or?
I mean, I think as with the region, we need to distinguish approving this plan, adopting, what did we say? Approving the plan with what we want to do as a district to address the issues that it is addressing. There's.
I didn't, would you say that again?
We need to distinguish as a committee approving the plan from doing a deeper dive into the issues it raises and how we want to address them.
Sure. This is, this is a required document for the state and it is what it is, but it's not all of what the district does, certainly. Correct, yeah. All right. Any other?
I think that, um, I, I do, I just feel like, um, I, I mean, I think there's many solid parts to the plan, so I'm not trying to be critical, but I just feel like it is such a big and important issue that I feel like just moving ahead and passing it because it's due to the state puts more pressure on the topic than maybe I feel comfortable with. And there's a couple of things just that jump out at me, like, um, that I feel like I'd love more information on too, including the move to ninety percent Spanish versus the fifty-fifty English-Spanish split. I think some of those things like that are in here and then just thinking about, basically, this is our statement to the state and to the community about what we're doing to improve the experience for all these marginalized groups. And so I'm, I'm just saying, I guess in general, that I feel like, you know, like it's a start, but, but there, you know, there's, needs to be like ongoing, continuous interrogation and discussion into these issues, I guess.
Well, I gather there will be yearly progress reports submitted to the state. Um, we can ask that those come to us also and we check back with uh, Mary and others about how's it, how's it going? You know, are you gonna modify anything for the subsequent year? Um, I mean, it's always, always a work in progress. All right. And I don't think any, I mean, not to belittle any concerns, but, but no, no plan will ever be complete. So, um, I'm gonna call for a vote and, and say that, that hopefully we'll be back in a year, not hearing the same problems, hopefully, um, progress towards um, reducing the heat on this heat map for at least some groups. So let's have a vote. Um, Bridget, how do you vote?
I'm gonna abstain for right now.
Okay. I vote aye. Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Irv?
I abstain.
Okay. It carries three to zero to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. What time is it? Oh, dear. Okay. To, uh, now to our interim superintendent to give us an update on plans for the sixth grade move. Um, I just to, if you didn't already notice, I attached the two documents that we looked at in February that Irv and I prepared, um, and the final memo that, um, we've, I forwarded to Doug. And then he has posted two documents in response. So.
Correct. Um, so I will, uh, make sure I get my mic close enough so they can hear me. Um, so there's two parts to what I attached. One is, is the sheet I handed out because it's, uh, it's a, it's an actual sort of timeline that I put into a grid and it's not by any means exhaustive at this point, but it was to frame uh, some of the steps and the times that we would need to do some of the work. Relative to making the, the transition of sixth grade to the middle school, uh, I relied heavily on, on the sort of timing of the last process we went through. So some of that's in, in place. What I, what I, uh, put on here was probably the most aggressive schedule for certain aspects of it. I think some of the aspects are the same as what they were previously, but I think in, in reviewing and thinking about some of the more logistical things, um, you know, in the, in the sort of other planning section toward the bottom there, around transportation and food service and those sorts of things, some infrastructure questions, those are ones where we didn't spend as much time on those, and I think they're pretty critical ones. And especially if we wanna do any infrastructure changes to the building in whatever way, um, I think we need, you know, the more time, the better, uh, is the short story there. So there's a fair amount of, of that, um, uh, in this schedule that's still fairly compressed. I would suggest that, you know, more time is, is, is better. But I'll step back. In the other piece, it was a, a sort of written memo where I, where I articulate out, uh, there's really two different things. There's when and there's what sort of structure that we wanna try. I had a couple of conversations with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed about modifying the regional agreement. By law, the regional agreements have all the member towns bring all the same grade levels together. And so to have something other than that would require special legislation to do it. Um, so to have a sixth grade only from Amherst in the district would, would be requiring special legis- legislation. And one of the key questions that Desi asked when, when considering any change to a regional agreement, particularly one like this, would, would be, how does this benefit students and does it benefit them all? And I think that, um, you know, in their, in conversations with them, they would, they would suggest that it, it, it doesn't benefit all the students equally, or uh, it advantages some versus others would be one other way to sort of say that. And so they'd be less inclined to, to be supportive of, of any kind of amendment like this. In other words, Amherst students would be overly advantaged per ta- perhaps relative to the, the kids in, in Palom Leverton and Shrewsbury. And, and currently, just, you know, from the economic standpoint, um, there's no, uh, you know, interest in, in Palom Leverton and Shrewsbury in moving their sixth graders. So, so I think from the standpoint of, of, uh, you know, sort of regionalizing the sixth grade students into, to the, to the, uh, Amherst-Palom Regional District, I think that's not gonna happen. Uh, so I think we can kinda, you know, set that aside as an option. And so what that leaves us with is this sort of school within a school, a sixth grade academy. You know, there's a lot of integration that can happen. There's a lot of, of, um, uh, shared staff and efficiencies we might gain through, through some shared staff that, that will still be possible and, you know, the technicalities of how we do that from a, you know, financial standpoint are one thing, but, but, you know, it would be fairly seamless from the standpoint of, of operating with kids and that sort of thing. However, there are a few things that you have to do in, in setting up sort of a school within a school that, that will need some, some attention and some time. Uh, you know, you could set up the school as an entirely distinct school, uh, as if it were physically somewhere else. Um, and that requires sort of a setup process with, with SE. There's a certain timeline on that. Technically, you only have to set it up as of July before you start in the fall, so it doesn't, you know, that part is not terrifically difficult. But it has a lot of implications around a bunch of other things around, um, some of our grant programs like Title, you know, one and Title two and some of that. Um, so, so we'd wanna be very thoughtful about that. Um, you know, one other possibility would be to technically leave the students in their homeschool. So, you know, we'd have all the sixth graders in one building, but they'd still be Fort River, Crocker and Wildwood students. That would be a mess, in my humble opinion, to do it that way. Um, but those are little details, I, I shouldn't say little details. Those are some of the details that we can work out that are, that are much less about the things that, that you guys generally are gonna be concerned about and care about. And that's, you know, sort of what's the educational program? And how are the kids, you know, fitting into the building? How does the, you know, the building operate? Do we have the right curricular materials? Both in the building? Do we have the right things in the library, et cetera, et cetera? How are we sharing spaces? How are we integrating these kids in a, in a smooth way, in an appropriate way, given the age differences, all of those kind of things? But, you know, the, as I, as I note in the memo, when we, we talk about sort of the second question, which is, when do we do this? I think there's a number of reasons to, to, uh, to wait until the fall of twenty-six. Um, I think there are certain things, and I mentioned a few of them a bit ago, around some of the logistics and some of the mechanics of, of the physical structure and, and things like materials and that sort of, sort of thing, that, um, it would be beneficial to have some more time, um, in the, in the process of, of, of developing a, a plan and implementing that plan. You know, again, I think there was a, a lot of work done around sort of, you know, the academic program and, and, you know, core educational model, models and schedules. That, that we can do, uh, and revisit and refine, but I think there's a fair amount of that that will hold up over time and, and its timeframe is, is not terribly long. But I think some of the other questions are, are pretty, uh, significant, um, and more time will, will serve us well. I think the second thing I would say is just that, um, there's a pretty big change for staff and then to do it again the year, so if we were to do it in the fall of twenty-five and move some of the staff to the middle school and then we're gonna do a big rearrangement with the consolidation of three schools into two uh, buildings, you know, that's a second layer of, of, of a pretty significant change. And the dynamics of, of, uh, professional relationships and all of that sort of stuff is, is, is in the mix twice. And I think that that's really, uh, I would suggest pretty hard on people and it would be better to do that simultaneously. And I think how people might view, you know, so one of the questions that was posed the last time around was like, well, who is interested in being in this sixth grade cohort at the middle school? And who wants to sort of stay in the, in the ca- what would be then a K-five elementary? Depending on how those new buildings are structured and look, people may make a different choice. And so by doing it simultaneously, they can evaluate those, those two different scenarios a little bit more fully. And, and I think that's helpful to, to folks as well. I think the advantages of doing it sooner are pretty small. There's a slight bump for the, I, I think for the, uh, the regional district, you know, with some efficiencies and, and, you know, potentially lease payment. And, and, you know, there's a, there is some risk of, of overcrowding at Fort River. I think our enrollments are such that, that we're fine. It will be pretty cozy the last year, but I think we'll still fit, um, our expectations of, of students. And I think, uh, we can make some choices around our Comanantes program as far as enrollment that, that can help us fit within the Fort River building uh, during its last two years. So, so I think those, those, you know, advantages for, for moving sooner would, would be pretty minor relative to the, the disadvantages, which I've, I've, I've laid out here in, in more detail. But, um, I think there's really, uh, more advantage to waiting a little bit than to not, than to sort of push ahead early. And I think there's opportunity to be much more reflective and, and, uh, thoughtful about a lot of pieces of the puzzle. And I think that, you know, sort of economically, the, the, the advantages for, for Amherst, uh, are not that great. I mean, the, it, it, there's a found a fair amount of effort and energy to do some of this planning work and then we'll do it again. We could potentially get a little economy of, of scale there with, with doing both simultaneously. So for those reasons, I, I'm suggesting that we, um, we keep the sixth grade students, you know, fully within the, the, the three elementary buildings we have. And then when, when we open the new building, then we'll make that move, would be my, my suggestion to the committee. I think as far as formal steps that you need to take, uh, you know, I think direction to me and to my successor is, is about which one. It's not a formal vote necessarily. It can be direction. It can be a formal vote. I think after that, there's a, you know, there's, um, potentially a formal adoption of the, of the plan of, 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 uh, structure around things, you know, that was, was put forward before, which is, you know, educational models, schedules, um, that sort of thing. Uh, so there'll be, I think, two sort of critical positions for you guys to take. I know that this came out and was available to you really late today, so I don't expect you to sort of decide in any way to this evening. And I think there'll probably be a lot of follow-up questions. So, um, but I think in, in May, direction about, you know, which way you think it's best to go is, is critical. And then, and then, you know, once we're in process, it'll, it'll be, uh, you know, well before, you know, probably six or nine months beforehand, we're, we're gonna have to build a budget. So around the time we're constructing a budget, uh, is when we'll need to formal sort of action by school committee to say, yes, we're gonna move the sixth grade at this point. Here's the, you know, the sort of plan and its component pieces, uh, that we're, we're saying yes to as well. Uh, and like, you know, as was the case, uh, last year, it, you know, it was kind of the November-December timeframe when the actual sort of actual step was taken by the school committee. So that'd be similar.
Thank you for this. Um, a couple of things before I open it up to questions. We have, at least on our draft agenda for next month, voting on an option, but that's when we were thinking we, regionalization was still a possibility. So if we don't need to vote, if we just kinda give you our direction next month, if that's okay, and then we don't, you just described, there will be, there will be at least one point where we do need to take a formal vote.
Correct, right.
But it needn't be next month to, for you to proceed. All right. My other question before I open it up is, I, I misread this. At first, I thought this was two years. This is, cause there are no dates, so I'm assuming May is twenty twenty-four.
Or twenty twenty-five.
Or twenty.
But I, but I, I laid it, I, I will say this. I laid it out as pres- without years on it.
Yeah.
In the most compressed way, which would be, is if the far-right column of August was August of twenty twenty-five. It's technically doable. I would be, uh, I think, you know, to do some of these things well in that timeframe, it's gonna be really difficult.
So if we said, if we make the decision, fall of twenty twenty-six, all this same work gets spread out on a, another twelve months of fall of twenty-four?
Yeah, I think some things probably don't move too, too much. Um, you know.
No, if they start in the fall.
For example, you know, in the sort of September, October, November, it's got collect and review, stakeholder feedback. You know, uh, maybe better is, you know, um, May and June, in the first two columns, transition committee, review and, and refine previous planning. Well, you know, we did that, when we did that originally, um, it was May and June of twenty twenty-two. And then by that following November-December, the committee was prepared to take action. So it can be as short a timeline as that. But I think there's some questions that we had that weren't fully resolved or, or I'm not sure that we were fully where we wanted to be relative to some things in, in regard to that, that we now have more time to, to dig into. And, and we could've been forever on, but at the same time, there's, there's a little more opportunity than say a six-month window to, to really explore some of that and think through some of those questions and, 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 uh, and receive feedback on it too. So we could propose things and there can be a more iterative process if it, if it's got longer than a six-month window.
Thank you. All right. Open it up to questions, starting with Bridget.
All right. So thank you. I, I agree with the idea of moving in fall of twenty-six. But I just am concerned about costs. I'm familiar with schools within a school and I know they all need their own admin. In this case, we have three specialized programs that would all be within a year, you know, within, all need support for that as well. So, um, one thing that I might suggest is a shift is even if the other times of the timeline were going out, I heard at a financier, one of the many budget meetings I've been at, that, um, there was potentially five hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money available for shift in the schools and that maybe they said we weren't ready yet, but I'm wondering if, if those funds need to be allocated by December twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six. Is there any way that we could be thinking about that? Because capital budgets are tight on the town side and then there's all these other operating costs we're gonna see come up. So just throwing that out there.
So I think that, that there was ARPA money that the town of Amherst had and was willing to sort of dedicate to this project when we were, you know, pursuing it earlier. When we sort of tapped the brakes on that, we paused and, and, and the town said, well, you know, we, we, we'd like to rel- you to release that back to us so that we can consider other options for using the ARPA funds. And, and they've considered a few different things. However, I don't think they've come to final decisions about some of that. So I think there's opportunity. At, at least that was the indication of the finance committee I was at a week ago. They indicated that potentially. They indicated that potentially this could be brought back. We'd have to shape it a little differently and re-submit that as a as a uh potential ask. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the town manager. I'm gonna pose a question and see where he sits relative to that as opposed to an individual counselor's point of view on that. So um, you know, I think that the um, you know, there's a fair amount of of work, you know, even if we're just reviewing things we've already done, there's still a amount of work that we we we're gonna ask people to do and and, you know, there's only so much volunteering you can get out of people. Uh, it's it's just not fair and it's not reasonable to to do that. So there's ob, obviously pieces of this planning work that are gonna require some some financial support. And then, of course, if there's actual physical structures or materials to buy or whatever, whether it be furniture or books or whatever, you know, that also requires resources. So if we can identify those and spin those and and articulate those needs, you know, I think we're in a lot better place to be more specific than we were when we did this the last time. So I think we can be more precise with our request uh in some ways. So I think, you know, we'll we'll pose a question and see, because that that'll definitely help uh the process move along in a smooth and and efficient way.
Super. And just really quickly, I know that the middle school teachers are really interested in having a voice in the process. No more needs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jennifer?
Okay, so just to close the loop in my own head of the that about not pursuing adding sixth grade to the region. So you're saying if we wanted to add our sixth graders to the regional district, it would require special legislation and a change to the regional agreement?
Correct.
And so did your Desi representatives say it's highly unlikely we would approve a change to the, endorse, approve to the regional agreement?
I think the thing I would say is this, I I don't think that was, I wouldn't say it was a quote. So let's put it, let me not put words in their mouth. But I think that uh any regional, changes to regional agreement have to go through their legal department and then have to be approved by the commissioner directly. You know, usually the commissioner is sort of the last one to do it and and I'm not saying they're a rubber stamp, but they, you know, they they're looking at and the the vetting that they're asking their staff and their legal department to look at is, does this serve, you know, the educational interests of the students? And uh, does it provide, you know, uh, as good or better for everybody that's involved? And I think that's where it it raised concerns for them that if we put the sixth grade in for Amherst, it doesn't play out equitably is the concern. Um, so I think that's that's where I think. And and I'm not sure I could find a way to make it work better, right?
Right. I was part of one of those conversations and that it poured, it's, I I saw it as very discouraging.
Okay.
Feedback, yeah.
And then my next question is, so I I am fully on board with not doing it in fall of '25 and doing it in fall of '26. And I would love to see a a timeline like this that starts May of '24 and ends August of '26.
Absolutely.
Because and and I think we should do whatever we need to do now, whether it's voting or not, but to like get the word out now that this is happening in fall of '26, because I think we're gonna need that year and a half or however, however long it is to like socialize the issue, to make sure people know, and then to do all this work. Because I would love to have the plan baked and in place before the, I don't, I don't, I mean, that's probably asking too much, but like before the fall '25 school year starts, so that like there's a whole year to get used to the idea. But that maybe that's asking too much, but but yeah, like I, like, you've made a compressed plan. Let's make a nice, long plan.
Yeah, actually, when I, when I started putting this together, I was, I started with that, like, May of '24.
Yeah.
And then I was like, well, I don't want to do this twice. And, you know, there were aspects of it that were clearly done previously in a in a shorter timeframe, but I also know there were questions that we wouldn't, we didn't have fully resolved uh or that came up a bit after that I think we do need to investigate a little more, but but I would be happy to and and fully expect to sort of stretch this out and then and and start filling in those details a little bit about, you know, some of this language is pretty broad, uh, you know? And and I think we get a little more specific with some aspects of it uh as we, you know, can paint that timeline and I can, you know, uh, spend a little more time with with some of the folks uh to to articulate the the level of 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 needs we have in some of those areas a bit more precisely. Even if we don't have answers, we can name the problem better.
Yeah. Just sorry, just one more comment for the committee. I think the idea of making it fall of '26 is not that we can wait until then, but because we shouldn't wait to do, we shouldn't wait to do anything. But it's more that we're giving ourselves that extra time to do all the things that need to be done. So we shouldn't wait. We should just, we should, we should plan for fall of '26, but we shouldn't wait to do work.
No, no, not wait to do the work. It was just either we can, we, the sixth grade could be in '25.
We're saying the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Deb?
Yeah, I'm 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 on board also with uh fall of 2026. At some point, it would help me to understand the pieces of the educational plan and whether or not the school within the school idea is impacted by that. The other way around. The fact that the sixth graders will not be part of a regional structure, how will that affect the plan, the original plans going forward of integrating the sixth grade into the middle school with programming, personnel, et cetera?
Yeah, I think that that there are aspects of that and and, well, and questions that were in place that are different now than they were last year that that sort of shaped that differently. I think that um, I think there's a lot of opportunity for shared staff. I think.
Still?
Still, uh, you know, there are, there are some ways we have to keep the distinctions and sometimes it's, you know, a sort of, I don't wanna say artificial one, but it's it's, you know, we do this, well, for example, you know, superintendent salary or the business officially, you know, split by percentages based on, you know, so we can do some of that same kind of thing for shared staff. It's it's, some of it's about um, what's the best, you know, leveraging of shared staff? What's the best way to um uh keep fidelity though to certain aspects of our regional, or seventh and eighth grade team model? How do we have the sixth grade fit into that, you know, in a good way that that works for everybody? You know, all of those kind of questions are all part parcel of it. And 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 people's, you know, sounding all the exact same people, so kind of revisiting conversations. Some might be more open to some things versus others, so we'll come back to all of that, I think, in in some ways.
Thank you. So um, although I don't see people rushing in for the next meeting, we'll have to uh recess in a couple of minutes. I want to just take the sense of the committee, does anyone um need more time to think about whether fall of 2025 is better target than the fall of 2026? See. Irv, you are out of the room for a moment. Do you understand what?
I went through this, heard it.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty-six is.
Okay, so I think we're all on board. We all agree. We don't need to formally vote, but that we do agree that um our our plan should be that the Amherst sixth graders move to a sixth grade academy at the middle school in the fall of 2026. And maybe all we can say for now then is keep planning now on a, on a, um, what is it, a year and a half? Long timeline? Almost, yeah. And um and and I will say, I I see that in, under July, it says recommendations to superintendent from the transition committee. Um, that's going, I think that's going to be super important to um for for this whole issue to be summarized and packaged for the new superintendent. So um, you know, not to waste any time and and some of these, and I hope some of the work can, although nothing happens in August, I guess, um, maybe some of the work continues even while the new superintendent is getting up to speed. Okay, so thank you very much for that. The the interview's at 7:30, right? Yeah, okay. So I'm going to move to recess. Uh, it's 7:18. Is there a second? We do have to vote on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I will want us to reconvene, um, but I think everything else will be pretty quick. All right, let's vote. Deb? I'm sorry. Bridget?
Aye. I am an aye. Jennifer?
Yes.
Deb?
Yep.
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're recessed.